Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Here.
Rosat?
Here.
Crouch?
Here.
Scarborough?
Here.
Merrill Lanceford?
Here.
Any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I have no changes to the order of agenda this evening.
We have no formal counsel recognition tonight. We will move on public comment. Have some new faces in the crowd tonight and just to to let you know that our format is if you wish to address the council, we ask that you step to the podium and give your name. And we have a three-minute time limit for you to make your statement. And the time then is kept by the city attorney. So it's real as you know that we have thirty seconds left. So does anybody like to address the council tonight? If not, we'll move to our agenda items. Item one.
Mayor and council, item one is an ordinance annexing portion of Barlow's addition. It's out down in southeast part of the city into the city limits. This is the near conclusion of a project that you have been working on for more than a year. The property owners in this area came to you and asked if you would consider helping them with their sewer and mine hole and mine hole surcharge problems back in early 2016. And a majority of them, but not all of them, signed petitions to come into the city that are conditional upon the city obtaining grant funding. There were some other smaller conditions, but that was the principal one because the area was determined to be community development block grant eligible. Earlier this year, back in March, we received notification that we had been successful at obtaining $450,000 in funding from the state of Illinois through the CDGT program. And thereupon, we initiated a process through the court because most of your annexations are hundred percent annexations. Because this was not hundred percent annexation, we had to go through the South County Circuit Court for them to verify that we had done everything in accordance with the law. That matter was continued for a little over a month and a half. And on April three, the court gave permission to the council to proceed with annexation after the thirty-day waiting period expired. That has now expired. And so now nearly a year after we started this process, it's ready for you to vote. There's no additional public hearing process. You've done all the public hearings. And we are sending out a letter tomorrow to all the property owners in that area informing them about all the details of public services, which will begin after the first of June. There was an additional waiting period. And so the annexation would be effective if you approve it on the first of June.
Thank you. I've entertained a motion to adopt the ordinance to annex portions of Barlow's addition into the city of Streeter. So. Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosat?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lanceford?
Aye.
Are we Streeterites now? Oh, never mind. So thank you for all of your hard work. I know we played a part of it, but you guys were our backbone. So as the Barlow addition, you know, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you and others that helped.
Thank you.
Welcome to Streeter. Just as a side comment, some of these projects, they don't move necessarily as quickly as we would like it to have. This year, we just finished the crafty addition project when they had their flooding five years ago. So that's how long it took us to get that taken care of. Item two?
Item two is a resolution, Mayor and council, that will close out all the contracts and close out all the multiple contracts we had on the City Hall project. This was not handled as a general contractor. It was handled as a construction management contract through our architect Prairie Forge. And so we're ready to, although there's still a few items that they're working on, like the glass and the door of the tourism office and a few other finer things, those will all get taken care of in the next couple of weeks. But they don't affect the closeout of the contracts. Jeremy, would you like to get more detail?
Thank you. Yeah, we're recommending Prairie Forge. The architects are recommending that all the contracts, the various contracts associated with the project be closed out. All the lien waivers have been filed, final lien waivers have been filed from all the contractors, including Prairie Forge. We have one-year warranty periods from the substantial completion dates of phase one in the basement of last October. And then phase two, the upper levels of January. So there's one-year warranty periods. All that has been executed by the contractors. We've actually already taken, we've already used one. So I mean, so that they are in place. So we're recommending that the project be closed out and we'll be finished with the City Hall remodeling project.
All the items that you directed to both home and about the contractor out, all the ones that you said to put in the contract that I saw, so this really is the end.
Thank you.
So if there was to be, if for example sometime in the future you were to decide that you wanted to do the roof structure in the back, that's going to be a brand-new standalone contract. Because you closed it out.
Entertained a motion to second to approve the resolution to close out all contracts in the City Hall renovation project. Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosat?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lanceford?
Aye.
Item three?
Mayor and council, as you know, from time to time, we are, well, not all the time, we're trying to dispose of mostly residential, sometimes commercial, but mostly residential properties that we've acquired because nobody else wants them, because they're foreclosed, because we could come up on back taxes, because it was a condemnation, any number of other things. And we try our level best to recover whatever the taxpayers had in these lots after we've had to clear them by selling them. And it's a lengthy process dictated by statute. We have to first appraise them, try to sell them for no less than eighty percent of the appraised value. If that doesn't work out, there's another waiting period, more hearings. And if that doesn't work, then we generally authorize staff to just sell them for whatever we can sell them for. This parcel, like the one you had on the last agenda as well, the Heenan Street, this one's on Richard Street, is one of those. The adjoining property owner is willing to buy it, but wasn't willing to pay at the eighty percent level. This property is at the corner of Richardson Golf Road. And so we have drawn the boundaries of the property differently so that the radius return there is improved to city standard. And we also retain the emergency side when there's that location. But other than that, the rest of the property's being transferred, including the garage stands on that structure next to Baptist Church. But this is, we have no need for this property. We've evaluated that. Just want to get it off our, our.
Entertained a motion to second to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of city property on Richard Street. Second? Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosat?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lanceford?
Aye.
Item four?
Mayor and council, the development of Hardscrabble Park did not proceed the way a normal park gets developed. You had a plan, you awarded it to a contractor, and then all of a sudden we discovered that nine-four and common old edists are going to take a whole lot longer to do serious remediation at the site than they ever thought that they were going to. And that caused us to have to change our plans. And so the park board moved very rapidly, I think, to come up with a new plan that stayed off the area that may be under remediation for another two years. And submitted back to you a plan that includes all the elements of the open lands grant and the oscillate grant, as well as incorporates just under twenty-one thousand square foot proposed dog park that is to be funded by the Hardscrabble Lions Club. And so this drawing has been amended several times. And the version that comes to you, which is in your packet, is the recommendation, the unanimous recommendation, I might add, of the park board at their last meeting earlier this month. Representative of the Lions Club, by Wallace here, and he would like to give you some more detail that you'll permit on the dog park element that is shown on the larger park plan.
I have a drawing. I think I was not able to attend the last park board meeting at the park. But there was a comment made that it'd be nice if there was some type of a drawing for the dog park so you could see exactly what we're talking about. So we put together a a drawing of the park, how we propose it. And it's not, you know, set in stone by any means. Depends on if you have, if there's other provisions that we have to take into consideration. There was a comment made that the main entrance for the park, the park board wanted to have the main entrance away from the playground area. So we put it on the opposite side, closer to the river, that side there. There's a walkway going all the way around the park. And I understand that between the dog park and the parking lot, the section of the dog park probably would be taken away. So there's a sidewalk going along that way too as well. So it would be a sidewalk, some type of sidewalk going all the way around the dog park. So the entrance would be easily accessible. We've got the placements of the benches, the trees, the picnic shelter in the middle, division for the large dogs, small dogs. And in the upper left-hand corner, you'll notice I've put a, we've put an entrance gate for maintenance for going in there with a riding mower, whatever the city has to cut the grass. Going in, and that's not set in stone either. It was just an area where I thought might be a good location. The city felt that it needed to be a different location. That's fine, we can do that too as well. But then, once you get into the small dog park, there's another maintenance entrance gate going into the large area, so easily accessible into both parks to cut the grass. The water station is in the main entrance area. And so we have to have some type of a water line going all the way up to probably where the restroom facility is, tighten into the water there. Jeremy, did I give you a copy of that? I didn't today? And the benches and everything, we have an idea of the type of bench and very similar to the styles we have in the city, the black ones, the soft blue one and the smaller version, not quite as expensive as the ones that you have. The mud bed stations are on a four-by-four post or an iron railing going up out of the ground. And the garbage cans can be set up on that same station too as well. So that's pretty well lined up. The benches would be having a concrete slab underneath them so they tighten in, tables have a concrete slab too as well. The main entrance could be a concrete slab or it could be mulch. Doesn't really make any difference to us. The fencing going around, our quote that we got for the fencing is on a four-foot fence. I know there was a comment, I think, made at the meeting last month about possibly a five-foot fence. Fence, I think. My personal feeling, four-foot fence would be high enough. Dog parks we visited, you get the fence up too high, you get someone like, like my sister who's under five foot. Are you five foot or under five foot?
I'm five foot.
Five foot. Be also difficult for people, kids, whoever, to look through the fence to see the dogs, you know, and that kind of thing. Four-foot fence, I don't think many dogs can be jumping over the fence. And if they do, they make it one of the policies, one of the rules that they don't return. Anyway, do you have any questions about our proposed layout of the dog park? Any questions, clerk?
The benches, are they paid for? Are they going to be sponsored? Is it available?
Most of them are sponsored right now. We still have a couple that are available to be sponsored. But we've met our, we're still taking donations. But the money we've received so far, plus the pledge that we've gotten from an individual for matching funds, we've reached what our budget is for the dog park. So we're financially ready to go since we get the okay from the city. And then we would propose to start working with Jeremy as far as making sure the benches and everything else that we order are, and then meeting all the codes and regulations in the city.
We can use the same benches we have out here, a different kind?
We haven't discussed it, but we've.
We can talk. But you don't need anything after the council acts on this, you don't need anything else to proceed, other than just coordination and staff.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks, bud.
Okay, thank you.
Entertained a motion, second, place and file the revised plan for Hardscrabble Park. No movement. Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosat?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lanceford?
Aye.
Item five?
Mayor and council, several years ago, you consciously decided that you wanted to do more to maintain, contain, and manage, contain, and reduce the city's long-term pension obligations where you can, and specifically wanted to remove the elected officials from the eligibility for the Illinois municipal retirement fund. There is new legislation that requires that elected officials publicly state what the minimum number of hours required is for discharge of duties. By not acting on it, you will effectively remove the governing body from IMRF. And so as this is in line with what you have historically indicated you want to do, my recommendation to you is that you formally indicate, you can act on a motion in order to retain and restore it. But if you want to have the city council completely out of this this year, the appropriate action, we need to take no action, reflect that decision in the minutes, and then we'll, so communicate with IMRF.
Comments? So we take no action, what should the motion state?
I'm not sure there has to be a motion. I think it's sufficient, Mayor, for you to simply state that there is no motion. You can call for a motion if you wish, but there is no motion. And what the impact that it is can be recorded in the minutes.
So I request a motion, advise for lack of motion. Any other discussion? Item six.
Mayor and council, we have been fortunate to have contributions last year in list for a, from outside of the city organization, for the construction of a splash park located in the northeast corner of City Park. And we have encountered some issues regarding the scope and size of subcontractors related to this project. And so what I would like to do, if it's okay with you, is ask the city engineer to talk with you a little bit about some more details of the project and specifically what the options are going forward. And based on whatever feedback you give, we will act, then we will pursue that option. And at the end of that discussion, suggest that you table this until we can bring it back as you requested it.
Thank you. So yeah, as Scott said, basically behind the scenes, or there's been a small steering group working with the private donor to develop a splash park for the northeast corner of City Park with a company called Vortex Aquatics. They're national, international manufacturer and installer of splash pads. So a big name in the industry. They've been developing design and specifications and budget proposals with their local vendors and contractors to install this splash pad. It's reached, it's come to a point where if the city council basically says that yes, it's ready to proceed and the city's behind putting in the splash pad, a little more detailed design from from Vortex, it's at no cost or anything. It's required to refine the numbers for the subcontractors that will basically be tasked with installing it locally. It's not to a point yet where the subcontractors can feel real confident about what they're putting in if they haven't done it before. It doesn't require anything special besides plumbers and electricians, some, maybe even some local concrete subcontractors to do the work. But if Vortex is going to proceed, they want to refine that design so we can make sure that the budget for the project is met. So that's, so basically, the concept and the overall pattern of the park has been figured out by the steering committee. But we need to move to the next step if the council would like to refine that numbers. We can actually come back with construction contracts if the council would like to.
I don't mind that we wait for additional information. But Vortex needs to produce it rather quickly.
And I've been talking with them over the last couple of weeks. We're working towards getting those numbers and being able to come to you hopefully in June.
Anybody have a question or any problem to table? No? Motion to a. Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosat?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lanceford?
Aye.
Item seven?
Mayor and council, closure of state highways requires a resolution of the city council, which is part of your packet. Since the last time you acted on one of these, the Department of Transportation in their infinite wisdom has increased the insurance requirements for it. And so we communicated that to the Cruz Night folks and their certificate of insurance does comply with the new requirements. Every day, the Public Works Director has been participating in their planning meetings.
Yeah.
And so is there any change to the, I mean, other than the change in insurance, is there any other change to the?
No, they're, they're going to proceed as usual. And then they're going to be calling a, another planning meeting with you and the mayor involved. So that should be coming.
Everything's on?
Everything's on target right now.
So recommend approval of the resolution. Request a motion, second, to approve authorizing temporary closure of westbound Route 18 and reduce lanes on Route 23 for Cruz Night September 2017. Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosat?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lanceford?
Aye.
And maybe this will put it in some of the rumors that Cruz Night is going to be canceled this year.
I don't know where that came from.
Item eight?
Mayor and council, item eight is a city council policy. And actually, we already have a city council policy that you adopted back in April of 2016 that has to do with the concept block and specifically has to do with sponsorships of benches and trash containers and other sidewalk furniture that would be placed there from time to time. At its last meeting, the START committee has made a recommendation on ten items that are related, that are actually the outstanding items that haven't been resolved with regard to the concept block. You have already enacted bump outs and the embedded pedestrian crossings and the replacement of the five street lights downtown. Those were the big ticket items. Also, we had, until those, the old lights were taken out, we also had a specialty type of a banner up there. And so the ten items here, I believe, are all the outstanding items. And so my recommendation is that we simply fold this addition, however you would amend it, into the existing council policy. So we have, you know, one policy that deals with the concept block. And I think it's our expectation that most of these items, maybe not all of them, but most of them can be finished up yet this year. I'm not quite sure about how quickly we'll get the ribbon done. We've been experimenting with different ways to do the ribbon. So I have a few slides to show you, just to add some pictures to the. We will continue to use the same trash receptacles that you've already adopted for the park downtown in the other blocks. And the same with the benches, which is just a shorter version of the seventy-two-inch ones we have outside here like that. And I was asking if that was the one they were going to, you guys haven't decided if you're going to use that one at the dog park, right?
Possibly.
Yeah. You saying that because I told them what it costs the other day. So the Public Works Department did an experiment for us right in front of the Wells Fargo Building and the former drugstore down there in the, coming east from Monroe Street on the north side of the street, continuing the herringbone pattern of the bricks. And when the colored concrete pavers were put in twenty-five years ago, they were just put on compacted rock. And so, and some of them stayed just fine, others heat badly. And you've seen that through the years. So what they've done is they've put, what do you call it?
Important cement mix.
Cement mix that while it's still wet, they set them in it, so they only do a section at a time. What the START committee recommends is continuing with this, although we want to make some changes in the way that it's finished out, but also putting in a, an accent brick that's blue. And we've had a couple of different versions of this, one of which Finefield Pottery made using the blue color that's back behind Owens's shop. And here's another picture of what that looks like, a close-up. And the street lights are now all in place. And of course, they include illumination not only of the traffic light, but also you can see the lower light, which much better illuminates the pedestrian way as well. And the lights came with the horizontal bars to put in banners. However, it's turned out to be an odd size. It's not the industry size for that, which is why we don't have banners up there yet. The first placement of planters had these more spread out. And it turned out that the space was just swallowed them up. And so the, visually, and so the START committee recommended clustering them like this in mid-block. So you'll have a coal card and then on one end, and then this mid-block, and then this at the other end, because there's a coal card in alternating blocks. And so at the present time, that'll be the extent of planters, one, two, three, without not a lot of little ones in between. That's what is recommended. And although it's not in the current concept block, we'll, we do plan to put in at least one, maybe two wayfinding signs using this design, which I think the city council has already seen. And although the banners will change, because you have to change your banners over time, this is some of the creative genius of Kirk Dye. And following the recommendation of the START committee that the downtown district use Mr. Streeter's first name in a double meaning way and call it the Worthy District. If there's any questions about anything that I've mentioned or any of the details of this, you are at liberty to amend it because it's your concept block.
I just talked to several business owners. The planters, they won't be painted, from what I've understood. But who's responsible for the flowers? Because the heat alone, she says, I water them six times a day and I can't.
In the past, we have recruited downtown businesses to do that. I think that in the long run, it's not reliable. And so we've been, I have not worked out a schedule yet with the Public Works Department. But especially during the hot weather months, I think that the only way to ensure that they look fairly uniform and that they have the maximum chance of survival is that it's going to have to become a function of the Public Works Department to water.
I didn't know if you could line them or?
No, that's not a problem. All the other businesses don't have a problem with it at all. With the heat from them, they water them once or twice a week.
Yeah, this, actually Monday.
Yeah, this, actually, Monday, members of the garden club went out and took some of the dirt out and replaced it with like that absorbent water, with all those capsules, to try to help retain the water longer, so that, because the original paint was just dirt. So that was added one day, and then they're going to plant some next one day.
Garden club furnishes all the flowers, they have several years since they've been there.
And, and if we can have a reliable partner who can do that, then that's great, but I mean, in final analysis, if it doesn't work out, it's, it's going to fall back on us.
Any other questions? Request a motion, second place, and file an amendment to the council policy regarding downtown improvements. Second. Any other discussion?
So, so the motion is to, is to amend type council policy by that, to include all those?
Yeah. Clerk, full roll, please.
Biedeich?
Aye.
Rosat?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Entertained motion to approve the consent agenda? Second.
You may have some of your own comments on consent agenda items, but I wanted to mention that there, that the city treasurer added a few extra items to the fund warrants list, and I also wanted to mention that the request, which is a part of the consent agenda for the, from the Streeter Waldox Committee Food Truck Festival, they are requesting that the city provide handwashing stations and a porta potty. Under your recently adopted policy on assistance to these organizations, it's not the size of an organization, it's not the size of an event that would automatically provide for that. However, if the policy is very clear that the city council wants to do that, then they do so. So Larry has determined that the cost of, of the two handwashing station and a porta potty for this event, in the aggregate, will be a hundred and eighty dollars. So if you wish to approve that item, item whatever that is, MC, then I just wanted to let you know that that's what the cost is.
It'd be seventy-five for a piece for the?
Sorry, it's, it's, you're right, it's a piece, a hundred and fifty, so it'd be two fifty-five, sorry, I did the math wrong, two hundred and fifty-five dollars is the fifty-dollar request, which would have to be, which would have to be a part of your approval of this inside your policy.
I have no problem with it.
Can I ask?
This is going to be one of the major festivals after this year.
Yeah.
No.
I have no trouble either, I just wanted to.
Clerk, full roll, please.
Biedeich?
Aye. Are we doing piece by piece, or?
No.
Okay, I am, I am abstaining from item C.
Rosat?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
For procedural issue, I mean, this is what's called serial voting in Robert's Rules
of Order, and we haven't done this a lot, so maybe this seems a little bit cumbersome, but I think that this is the end effect, and I mean, you're voting, you're abstaining for, you want to abstain from, and voting yes on, on the balance, the, the only other way to handle it procedurally is to, is to deal with each item separately, but I believe this implies a Robert's Rules of Order. Do you have any suggestions?
I, no, I mean, essentially a little half of the end, anyway.
Right.
Yeah, so what are we doing with B? Are we coming back to him?
Well, we've been approving to approve the consent agenda, and all these items, consent agendas, so, other than?
You, you voted on the entire consent agenda, except for how council member Biedeich voted to abstain on one of them, and Councilman Scarborough voted to abstain on the other one, but other than that, you've all voted for the consent agenda.
Gotcha.
I'm going to take your opinion. We'll, we'll get this down to a routine.
Got to start again, a question about?
Okay. Any other thing you need?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Scarborough, you have anything else, please?
I, yeah, just wanted to say it's an honor to be up here, excited, I'm just starting out, so it's going to take a little bit.
You're welcome.
We've got a, I've met with the mayor and city manager, and we've got some ideas, motion. Say hi to my wife and mother, because I'm a little frustrated.
Councilman? Councilman Rosat?
I have a couple things. First, some related, on May twentieth, the food truck festival this Saturday, I'm sure Carol will have a lot to say about that, I won't say too much. Other than it's for the Waldo program, where sixteen or fifteen-year-olds will be done four days by two hundred artists per play, so it'll be a very good event, so we need everyone's support for that. On June seventeenth, there's going to be a concert in the park, that's Saturday at three o'clock, it's called Poco a Poco Music Camp, it's the finish of the, of the band camp, it's going on all week, by, from my understanding, poco a poco means a little by little, so it's, I suppose, pertaining to students learning music and getting to be professionals. Kate Tombaugh is in charge, and she's assembled a, a staff of all professional musicians to run this camp, and I'm sure it's going to be very good, I'm sure the concert will be very good on the seventeenth. June eleventh, there's another bike race at Merle Park, this is part of the Illinois Mountain Bike Championship Series, and it's really interesting to go there, to watch these people, they're in a little bit better condition than I am, and they, they go very quickly through the hills of Merle Park. And then on July first, Pluto Fest, celebrating Clyde Tombaugh and his accomplishments in the park, there will be music and food and beer tasting from local vendors. That's all I have.
Biedeich?
Actually, tomorrow night, the Moose Lodge is hosting a quarter auction to benefit the fund that's at the Starbuck Country Community Foundation for the tornado victims in Ottawa and Napier Plate, so it's being held tomorrow night at six to eight thirty PM. And the food truck festival, that's why I have to vote, not vote for C, because I'm hoping run that. That will be twelve to seven, we're hoping that the thunderstorm weather prediction does not come true, but we'll have music onstage at the Palm Pavilion from twelve till six thirty, we have five food trucks coming from Staris Springfield, Illinois, and over forty vendors that are hoped to be there. And then the following weekend, Memorial Day weekend, Park Fest will return, so that'll be again at the city park. And that's all I have.
Just keep in mind, July fourth, group has been working, and festivities will be back out at fourth, July six through nine, six through the night.
Okay, one more thing.
Just a reminder to the council that the Streeter will be co-sponsoring the LaSalle County Mayor's Dinner on June the twenty-second, and we're going to have it at the Yolks Club and Aaron Streeter, and it'll be co-sponsored, but thanks, so just keep that in mind that day.
Just want to thank everybody for coming, we haven't had crowds this large in several months, eh? So it's nice to see people in the audience, especially ones clapping, we never see that again. That's great, come on back next week.
Nothing else, entertained motion for adjournment. Salute. Second. Clerk, full roll, please.
Biedeich?
Aye.
Rosat?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Stand the jury.
Comment, please, how nice to see you, Streeter looks from years past, how it's improved parts in Illinois, the streets, everything's looking up, North Point, all the improvements that's come along that people think just happened, a lot of hard work in there.
Just the ring, thank you very much.
Now, now we got the southeast.
Yeah, now you have us, right? How lucky. Right, that's kind of a gift, right?
Yes, yeah, that's right, Joe's momma came into the city.
She was a bar lady.
I heard Crouch on the beach with her. Crouch released.